Who come here who rarely have cars. Something, I don't know if we mentioned it before, but another change we did this year is that the passes that the folks who live in the apartment complexes get as part of their residence. We have a, CADA has a program where for most of the apartment complexes in this area, if you rent, you get a CADA pass as part of your rental without additional fee. It's built in and they pay CADA for this, which is a great revenue source for CADA. Those passes used to be limited just to a particular route to get you into town or on campus and back, but you couldn't use it for system-wide travel. This year, we expanded that. You can now use that pass for travel anywhere in the system. And we've gotten feedback from apartment complexes that particularly with international students, that has been a huge plus for them because they didn't have other means of traveling regionally. So we're just trying to add some value and hopefully make those passes more valuable to the apartment complexes so they're willing to continue purchasing them and maybe even paying a little bit more for them.
Supervisor. First of all, yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm always impressed at this point to see all of the variables that you have to deal with and the ones that you can capture on the website that people can then easily capture themselves. And I wanted to add that my husband uses, is it CataGobi for medical appointments?
Could be CataGo or CataRide. They're actually provided in the same type of vehicle by drivers with the same training. So you should be able to get the same level of service in each.
Yeah, since I don't use it, I can't remember exactly what it is. But he is very appreciative of that. And I might add that, so we are now a one-car family, not by choice. That's another whole other story. But it's turned out that when you have one car and when things change, you adapt and you start looking at things differently. So what I would love to do is somehow capture what for us was a serendipitous opportunity, not such a positive one, is an accident. And how to market that. I know many people who are similar age to me who are deciding, hey, it's time that we have a one, a four-on-one car family, but there are times when that doesn't work. So, and one last thing, do you have any guess about, or ideas, about the increase in ridership this last year? Those are very good numbers that Mary presented. I guess in the increase in ridership or is that?
So, any guess regarding what the?
What brought the increase? Or is it something that you see each fall?
Well, um, we're still studying it. It's very new. I think our speculation is, is that increased service frequency almost always increases ridership. When the bus is running more frequently, people tend to ride it more because it's available. It's easier.
It's a bootstrapping.
Yeah, right. And that's more than likely what has been the cause, but we're still looking at, in fact, we're doing some surveying right now, passengers, to see answers to those kinds of questions. So we're looking into it.
And I think I noticed, driving by the CADA garage, that you're still looking for drivers or always looking for drivers?
Always looking for drivers.
I remember that was a critical point right after COVID, during and after COVID.
Yes, we're still probably about 20 drivers short where we would like to be. It's, and hats off to Lori and Mary and the service planning folks because we've been able to achieve a significant ridership increase with no more drivers this year than we had last year, just kind of better engineered schedules. And we're, our concern is that we're sort of hitting the ceiling. I'm not sure we can get a lot more efficiency out of what we have, so we really are looking for more, more bus operators. And we're still offering a very generous signing bonus for bus operators and for maintenance personnel. So if anyone's watching and is interested, give CADA a call, please. Hope you don't mind the pitch.
We'll spread it around.
This is the time, give them a number while you have the opportunity.
Just go to our website and, and all the application information is there.
I'm sorry. Supervisor, Eber?
It's obvious that you're trying to really respond to what the actual ridership is rather than a one-size-fits-all, and I think that's fantastic.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the, I think we're still learning about the CataGo-type service. And it is, I mean, we literally argue with each other at our service planning meetings about any kind of a change to routes because we know inevitably, no matter what you do to a route, someone's going to be unhappy and someone's going to be happy. And so we try to minimize the unhappiness and maximize the happiness. And what CataGo gives us an opportunity to do, especially in some of the areas kind of toward, you know, further from the kind of core business district where the density of housing and everything is much less, when you run routes in those areas, you just can't reach people in those areas because if the bus snake through all the streets, it would take two hours to get into downtown. And what CataGo lets us do is because it's a demand, what we call a demand response service, where we just go, when you call us, we can cover a much larger area with fewer vehicles than we would ever be able to cover with a route network. So it kind of gives us a broader reach. So we're, we're learning what to do with it and customers using it seem to like it very much. In, actually in Harris Township, we don't currently have any fixed route service anymore because the fixed routes in Harris Township, simply no one rode. Ridership was really low. And now that we have a big network of CataGo services in that area, we're providing more rides than we ever provided with our bus routes and it costs less. And customers are happier, so we're, hopefully we're moving in the right direction.
I guess since I'm your biggest cheerleader, I am the person that rode the AC bus. I wanted to ride the W before, before our meeting to get a feel of, you know, their route, but for the AC route, and I got to learn the bus routes and they continue to be top-notch.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate their courtesy and their patience when riding.
Yes, hats off to our bus operators. They, they have a very hard job.
Yes. When you started this, the AC route, did you have complaints about where you drop most people off at Sklo and people think they can catch the bus at Sklo to go back here?
I don't know that we did.
You actually have to go to college to catch the return route. Had, had you had any complaints or confusion on that? I know it's on our route, but it's like normally when you, you drop a person off there, they're, they're looking to come back across the street or they're looking to come back the same route. But here you're actually coming down another block or two to get on college to come back. And I was just curious.
It's not a topic that has bubbled up to the top. We certainly probably have had a couple and it's one of the, it's one of the inherent challenges we have with the State College downtown, that with the one-way streets, you can't really connect and we don't have a, we would love a transit center downtown where all of the services went into one point and you could easily connect. That is our dream and we're still, we're still working on it. And that would eliminate that need, but kind of the inbound ends up, up at the library on Beaver Avenue and the outbound is on college. So that's kind of hard to avoid that connection.
Yeah, I'm just wondering because it was like, what I heard from some engineers.
We'll certainly have our radar up to, to listen for that and if we do, make sure that we do passenger education. The first couple of weeks of service, we've actually had staff, including all the people here in this room, actually out at stops, talking to people, making sure that they understand the changes. There's a period usually of a couple of weeks that people, especially people returning to State College who weren't here over the summer, they're surprised by the changes. So it takes a little while for it to all sink in.
But I truly appreciate, like I said, being a cheerleader for CADA and now CataGo, but I'm like, I really appreciate, you know, what you've done. My other, I guess, I'm getting used to the schedule of the AC. The northbound, usually with the southbound, I could just look at, catch the load, come down, but now it's like the southbound is on your right hand and you're trying to look at that to come back on your north, the north side. So I'm like, was that a switch in the schedule? And if it was, I'm like, right-handed.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, and I think that, that's a switch we made last winter, last spring. And that was one of those, we just don't have enough drivers, so we have to change how we're thinking about the inbound and outbound.
Okay. I'm just wondering whether we, no offense for my left-handed folks, but you know, it's like, okay. The other thing that I'm, I'm looking for this to continue to have good numbers, are you looking as the weather change for our ridership to be similarly high on the same, on the same route? Or are we still pushing for CataGo instead of the bus route?
Um, I don't, well, when the weather changes, ridership generally gets better. If it's inclement weather, people, more people ride than walk or bike or do other things. We're always, this is our peak time, the first few years, first few weeks, when the students come back and everybody comes back and everybody rides. And then usually by the third week, many of the students realize they can skip classes once in a while. So they don't all have to go to class. Literally, that's true. So we don't have the same loads, the things calm down a little bit and the, and the service gets much more level. And we'll have another little peak like that in January, when the spring semester starts. So the first couple of weeks, very high, then it levels off, but then it usually stabilizes and it'll stay that way until the winter break.
Well, thank you. Any more questions? If none, thank you. The staff were coming out in full force and we appreciate you taking the time out.
And we appreciate your support so much, we couldn't do what we do without your support. So thank you very much. And if you ever would like us to come back and talk about anything else, let us know. We're happy to.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I able to test drive the bus before I commit to applying?
That came that way.
I just want to ride it, see if I can do it. Might come in part-time.
We have joked about that. There are systems that actually will have a recruiting event on a closed course, so you can come and drive the bus. Our insurance carrier won't let us do that yet, but we're working on it.
You didn't tell him that. You just.
I'm behounding you.
Thank you.
Are we okay now?
Give us one second. Sound crew over here.
I think it's okay now.
Everything's okay now?
Yeah.
Okay. The sound crew fixed it.
Next on the agenda is the proposed ordinance 2024-642, amending the Center Region Rental Housing and Building Safety Code. Amy, I think this is yours.
Yes, so this ordinance basically amends the property maintenance, rental housing and building safety property maintenance code to opt us back into the emergency alarm section, but leave us out of the nuisance alarm portion of that because our police department handles that for us. So we advertised this for a public hearing this evening and it's ready for action.
At this time, I'm opening the public hearing up for the public for questions and comments. It's open. I'll give a person a moment. Amy, we're not seeing anyone regarding?
No.
Okay. Seeing no public comments or questions, I close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments on the board at this time? If not, then can I get a motion to approve the ordinance 2024-642, amending the Center Region Rental Housing and Building Code?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The ordinance 2024-642 is adopted. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the proposed ordinance 2024-643, prohibiting parking on Waddle Road.
Yep, so now that Masters Boulevard is open, the police chief and our director of public works operations recommended that we post parking restrictions on the western side of Waddle Road from the intersection with Tofftree's Avenue and Masters Boulevard to the interchange with I-99. So this is also ready for action this evening.
Okay. I open the public hearing up. Public hearing is now open for questions and comments. Maybe a second more. Seeing none, no questions from the public. The public hearing is now closed. Action. Are there any questions from the board at this time? Then can I get a motion to approve ordinance 2024-643, prohibiting parking on Waddle Road?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The ordinance 2024-643 is adopted. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the proposed ordinance 2024-644, amending the stormwater management ordinance to be consistent with the Department of Environmental Protection 2022 model, stormwater management ordinance. Amy or Michelle?
I will take this and then if you have questions, Michelle is on Zoom and can answer them. So we are required by the state to participate in the municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4 program, which assigns us a permit and defines certain activities that we have to perform to satisfy those requirements. So one of the activities that all of us collectively had to do this year across the Center Region and the county is to update our stormwater ordinance to comply with some best management practices and some other new updates in language from DEP. So that's what this ordinance does. Michelle and the other engineers that are involved with the MS4 program actually put the model ordinance together. So she's the expert on this, she's on Zoom if you have questions, but if you don't, this is also ready for action.
Any questions? Okay. I open the public hearing up. Any questions from the public or comments at this time? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. Are there any questions or comment from the board at this time? Seeing none, then can I get a motion to approve ordinance 2024-644?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Elliot's seconded it.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The ordinance 2024-644 is adopted. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the public safety and seeing no items. Moving next to public works operations, we have no items for that. And next is engineering, planning and zoning. Resolution 2024-11, the wind-swept farms planning module.
Okay, so I'll take this and then Jenna Worgo, who's our principal land use planner, is also on Zoom if you have questions on any of the planning items as we're moving through the evening and then she'll be doing a few of these also. So for wind swept farms, the Board of Supervisors conditionally approved that preliminary subdivision plan on April 24th, 2024. Plan proposes to re-subdivide several previously approved lots with a combined acreage of 32.19 acres into a seven-lot residential development that will be serviced by a 75-foot public roadway. Sanitary sewer and water will be located on lot. So you have to approve the planning module, it has to go to the state because these are on-lot systems. So that's what this resolution does. CRPA has reviewed the planning module and found it to be complete and they recommend approval of it.
Okay. Are there any questions for Jenna or for Amy at this time? Then can I get a motion to approve resolution 2024-11, the wind-swept farms planning?
I move, I so moved.
Can a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The resolution 2024-11, the wind-swept farms planning module, motion has passed. Next on the agenda is the coop land development plan, 1692 North Atherton Street, TP 18-012-043.
So I will take this. Pentara Engineering, on behalf of their client, submitted the coop land development plan. The lot is zoned plan commercial and is approximately .42 acres. The applicant is proposing an Eden restaurant at the site. We did have two concerns related to this plan. The first was related to the ADA parking requirements, which they took care of before the planning commission meeting. They added a second space. The second was related to the impervious surface coverage and this is also, to my knowledge, been taken care of. I was out of town, but the owner of the property is bringing it into compliance with the 75% impervious regulation requirement. So this makes this plan a lot easier for you to do this evening.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board at this time? Seeing none, then can I get a motion to approve the coop land development?
So moved.
Any a second?
A second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The coop land development plan passes. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is rezoning request for 480 Douglas Drive, 18-009, 2020, that's 000, and 474 Douglas Drive.
So I'm going to let Jenna take this because she prepared this analysis and she's the expert.
Okay, Jenna, welcome.
Oh, we can't hear you, Jenna.
Just a little bit.
Try talking to her.
The better.
Yes. It's a B-bang.
All right. Get really close. All right, so quick in the agenda is a rezoning analysis that's here, has conducted for these two parcels along Douglas Drive. They are currently zoned, apart to low-density residential and appropriate requested of the office buffer district. There is in the agenda, the attached report, essentially through small hallway to the last page, is the summary of the whole analysis. We looked at the context of this request for the neighborhood, the fiscal features, conclusion, infrastructure impacts to this rezoning request. And then our recommendation after reviewing the request in relation to the future land use map that we have in the comprehensive plan and whether it falls in line with the overall goals of the Center Region Comprehensive Plan. So based on the analysis that we conducted, we are recommending approval of this rezoning request to rezon these two parcels. Given the regulations that are included here on this buffer district, there are a lot of requirements that come with this zoning to buffer these low-density commercial uses that are directly flooding neighborhoods and it's beautifully crafted in my opinion to buffer essentially a very highly trafficked corridor against a neighborhood. And it gives the neighborhood in my opinion more protections. However, looking at just a rezoning two parcels, we wouldn't legally be able to do that. There are a lot of issues that could arise with spot zoning. And we are actually recommending a review of that corridor essentially from Douglas to Galen because that whole area right there directly flooding Atherton is zone R2. And reviewing the impacts that essentially this whole corridor could have additional buffers for that neighborhood by going to office buffer district may be a better outcome. So we're happy to answer any questions on specific impacts to this rezoning. Again, the OBD district is perfectly ready for this location and to have these additional protections for the neighborhood while also recognizing many, I don't think there'd be many single-family residential homes that would be located along Park Atherton Street right now.
Are there any questions at this time?
So I'll just jump in on what Jenna said. As soon as we fix this. So when we looked at this and discussed this, one of the, I think visions that we'd like to do for the township is to look at Atherton Street as a whole and do a corridor study for it. So we would look from Valley Vista up where it meets into the borough and that goes through three municipalities, then the borough, Ferguson and Patton. Because one of my concerns, and I think it's shared by our staff, is that Atherton Street is a very busy corridor. It's a very commercialized corridor in sections. It's got these industrial areas, these other areas. So we need to look at and consider, it has a high redevelopment property or probability, particularly through our section of the township. And we have to look at stormwater, impervious coverage, some other things, and also access points along Atherton Street because right now, we're kind of living with the sins of the past. We have so many different accessways into and off of that road. So if you're looking at the section between Douglas and Galen, that section was really, I mean, there's some industrial type uses out there. There's the Valley Vista, there's the Sheets, and then there's the property next to it that's vacant. So I think doing some forward thinking would be a good way to protect the neighborhood behind, because certainly Park Forest is behind it and some of the other neighborhoods. But then also thinking about, that could be a gateway into the commercial core, into the middle of North Atherton Street. So that's why we think, when we were talking about this at a staff level, spot zoning is certainly a concern in Pennsylvania and we really couldn't just rezone these properties to OBD. But we were thinking that doing some further analysis, and that's all we're asking you is if you're in favor of that. This is not, we're going to do a rezoning. Pennsylvania has a very long, as you're aware, a very long process for that. And we would want to make sure that we're engaging the residents out there as well and the property owners as well. But this just provides some forward thinking in that if we do rezon it, those properties don't have to change hands and don't have to change anything today, tomorrow, or the next day, but five years, 10 years from now, if a business goes out of business and sells, then there's something else that could go in there. There's another option and that maybe looks a little different than the way the corridor looks today.
So you're just asking us to approve to, for it to go to the planning commission?
Yeah, for the planning commission to study and have Jenna and Summer Brown, who's our local land use planner, actually do a more comprehensive analysis for that corridor. We probably would also have to go up to CRPC as well, but also want to engage the region a little bit on this. And the corridor study is something that I know Mike Tilka, the CRPA planning director, has been interested in engaging the MPO and trying to get some funds to do that long-term project as well.
So what's the board's pleasure? Supervisor, you?
I agree if we look at the whole corridor and include public input from the very beginning, we may have the best outcome. If we start doing stuff without public input, we almost always have a problem.
All right. Supervisor, you all right? Supervisor Whitman, you all right?
Yeah. Can I make a motion to approve Resolution?
No, we don't have to. We're just agreeing to pass it to.
Oh, the planning commission.
Yeah. Right?
Yes, yep.
That's all we are doing.
Yeah, for further analysis.
Supervisor Whitman.
No one wants to say my name?
Heshevsky. Heshevsky.
Please.
Say my name.
Heshevsky.
Thank you.
No, I agree. It makes sense. You want the public to have their hearsay.
So this is perennial request for this property. And I just caution, as I know you will, about obviously reaching out to neighbors.
Yeah, and I've read through the history. So I understand, I understand where both of your comments are coming from. And I think the key to this, right, is when we look at it, certainly one of the impacts would be to the residential neighborhood. But Jenna's absolutely right. No one's going to put a single family home on North Atherton Street. That nobody wants to live on North, you know, live right there and have the ingress and egress issues and things. But I think we also need to couch it and look at, we have basically industrial uses across the street. And those aren't necessarily going to be there forever. I mean, they might be there another 50 years, but we're trying to look long-term. And I think there was a lot of really forward planning back in the 70s and 80s in this township, so I think we want to continue that now. And so again, looking at the analysis and then talking and making sure the neighbors are heard as part of that discussion. It's just a discussion. It's not anything that we're doing today, tomorrow, or the next day.
I will say that years ago when I was campaigning, and I do a lot of door knocking in that area, what are you concerned about? People along Douglas Drive and the northeastern parts of Park Forest are concerned about crossing that road.
Yep.
No matter what, right? So it is a problem there specifically at Douglas and North Atherton. They're concerned about the timing of it. And it's a big street to cross, so yeah.
Yeah, we're actually making an upgrade to that next year. That's part of the Atherton Street Green Lake Go project that we have. So that'll be happening next year. But yes, there are some pretty significant issues there.
So it is on the minds of a lot of residents. And I think doing the overarching study will be. Thank you, Jenna or whoever.
Yeah, Jenna did it.
Thank you, Jenna. Any other questions, Supervisor Evans? I'm sorry.
Okay, but the proposal came in from a property owner. And I think the reason for not going along with the property owner's request right now is the state requirement that you can't do this as spot zoning.
Correct. And he was at the planning commission meeting and heard this presentation. And he understands what our staff recommendation is. He also heard, like, he had communicated, I had sent him the agenda and he communicated back with me. So I'll make sure to follow up with him as well. I think he understands that it would be spot zoning and that's why we can't do the rezoning request that he's asking for.
All right. That's all right. Any other questions? Any other comments? All right, moving on. Next on the agenda is obtainable housing ordinance, presentation and discussion.
All right, this is Jenna and Missy Schoonover from the Center County, oh, it's all Jenna, but Missy Schoonover from the Center County Housing and Land Trust, our good friend is sitting in the front row. And we have members of our planning commission. If they want to move up to the front row, we have Ellen Foreman and Sharon Collins in person. And then we have Jim Payne and Rich Schmidt. And I'm trying to see if there's anybody else I'm missing from the planning commission on Zoom. Now.
Well, welcome everyone. Jenna, you're up.
Okay, Jenna, hold on.
One second. There we go.
All right, so the agenda is a little deceiving session presentations. So the planning commission has seen some of this stuff. We wanted to provide essentially a foundation of affordable issue, affordable housing issues in some region, specifically in township, just context, facts. And then we have a second presentation that is more, I would like to call it a pa, of what components are found in these types of ordinances because, again, we are not looking at existing ordinance, we're looking at establishing a new ordinance. So this is a big process. It involves a lot of community input, a lot of input from the development community, the neighbors, residents, et cetera. So the success that I have in these ordinances is everyone is educated, everyone has the facts, they know the basis for how you went it up as the solution for township. The one thing that I do ask, once I go into presentation mode, I will not be able to see anyone in the room, so please do not hesitate to yell out if you have questions at any point in time because I want to make sure that everyone understands what we're discussing and each topic. Everyone see this?
Yep, yep.
All right. So what does attainable housing mean to you? It's kind of started your question, or your presentation, I don't know, so this, because it's a different kind of one. For me, it's everyone has the ability to afford a home, whatever tenure that might look like, where they want to live. So to me, that's a very wide ranging definition of what attainable housing means to me. And it's different part depending. So I want to keep that in mind of this ordinance is going to be specifically tailored to the tax action, so we're needs, et cetera, and especially the first part of this presentation. It's really getting into what's been done so far. So we have a lot of housing assessments, needs assessments that have been conducted by Center County most recently, and then you have our tax action with your housing task force report. So essentially, there are these existing studies, the specific tax action study that we have. There are four goals in here that we are trying to meet for the municipality. So this is one of those steps. It's number four, the tax action, and it's like approaches, that's for attainable housing. And I will say, and the planning commission certainly repeat this, this is not the only tool in our tool belt. There are a lot of ways to get attainable housing, whether it's minimal lot sizes, whether it's being used, and as we are going to approach tonight, attainable housing for instance. So most of it is Center County, the 223 housing needs assessment. So included in this study, one of the biggest things that I call us houthers, we're housing advocates for Center County State College. We wanted specific data about Center Region because while Center County having that information is important for the whole context, I think we can all recognize, Center Region is just a little bit different. We have higher housing costs. We have this student housing affordability with rental issues coming into play. So we wanted to have data that was specifically focused on Center Region and it was conducted. So what I'm showing you here is essentially the gap that was identified in these studies for these housing units based on the income brackets for households in Center Region specifically. So this is for, I think this one is for the household homeowners. And then we have as well identified a gap for rent for households. That's a lot of units in this region. So I like to start with definitions. I think in my time, from the Borough Ferguson, now the State College, I lived through iterations of workforce housing, affordable housing, the table housing. So I want to make sure we're all, when we are talking about these issues, we're all understanding what those definitions are. So affordable housing, this is defined by HUD. It's housing which the occupants pay 130% of their gross income before taxes for housing costs. Housing costs, that is monthly mortgage, that is your rent, that it is all the way down to your HOA and condo fees. So this is what HUD determines that 130% takes into account all of these expenditures for a household when they come up with this 30% number. And attainable housing is built to serve families that have different levels between true affordable housing options and market rate housing. So it's usually between 60 to 120% everyday income. And we're going to get to what that is for Center Region specifically in a little bit. But that is essentially where we are coming from. A lot of this is drawn by the new part thing is, is that we stay in line with HUD when it comes to these ordinances. So AMI, the midpoint of the regions of income distribution calculated by gross income, and that is before taxes. So what does this actually mean? I know I sit through presentations, I'm like, okay, am I cool? So essentially what it means is that 50% of households in the area that HUD calculates these numbers for, we're going to look at this for State College later, 50% of households make more than this middle point, 50% households make less. And that's essentially the AMI, is this middle line between those two. So for example, if the AMI for an area was $50,000, 50% of the households in that area make more and 50% make less. So a lot of US Department of Housing and Urban Development, they come up with a lot of these calculations. They use the data as kind of pointed out from the American Community surveys, this census-based data. It is the best data that we have to utilize for these numbers when it comes to AMI, when it comes to household sizes, et cetera. So this is based on the factual data that we get from census. So I talked a lot about Center Region, township, et cetera. So really what HUD defines our area as a State College metropolitan statistic area, so you'll see State College MSA. That is how HUD is defining our affordability. And you will see, it is the entire Center County, that is how it is drawn out for HUD. So they take into consideration all of the incomes in the Center Region or in Center County. So what this means is essentially like how, what HUD takes this data, it's based off of the households in that area, their income, it's based on a cost of living in that area. So as you can see in this graph, if we had AMI numbers for San Francisco, California, they're going to be a lot higher than a more rural area. And that's exactly the beauty of these calculations. Well, as we go through this process, we might not actually dig down deep as to how HUD gets these numbers. And no, that it is based on the households living in this area, the area itself, what it costs to live here. So they take into account a lot of these factors to get to these final numbers that we're going to be dug into here later. So back to State College MSA that we have here, the 2024 AMI for Center County essentially is $108,000 up. So for Center County, half of our households make less than $108,000 and half of them make more. And that's really what we have here for Center County. Are there any questions on that?
Just, just one, is it?
No, it's.
Jenna, Supervisor Whitman.
It's not. Is it, sorry, the AMI for the Center Region or for Center County? I think you said both at one point, so. Uh-oh, now she's.
Say that again, Jenna.
It's the same.
Oh.
You can say that interchangeably. So the same college, MSA, is Center County.
Thank you.
And as HUD determines these.
Thank you so much. Okay, I missed that. Thank you.
No, I want to make sure I'm the same page. And we'll, I'll have these written throughout, so I just want to make sure. Anyone else here you're going?
Awesome.
Going.
All right. All right, so again, back to this AMI concept, it's based on income, it's based on where you live, it's also based on the size of your household. So essentially HUD recognizes that a one-person household isn't going to have the same expenditure as a four-person household. So HUD's eyes, these are not the same, even though they live in the same area, they, this for State College and for every place in the United States, a one-person household is different than a four-person household. So I'm going to be providing factual data for State College in this presentation. So 60% AMI for a one-person household in the State College MSA is $45,450 for a one-person household. Contrast to that, the four-person household, 60% AMI, they are at $64,950. So again, it's taking into consideration cost of these households and where they live, how they are, and what those incomes are. And so that's really how we get to this. We call this the great umbrella of housing. In order to have a diverse community where everyone can live, where they work, and have that great quality of life, it's best if we have services and programs that address this full spectrum from 30% AMI all the way up to 120% AMI. Now what we see on my end of the spectrum is that there are a ton of programs that really address the, what we call extremely low income, so it's less than 30% AMI, all the way up to about 60% is where we see programs essentially go down. There aren't as many for the other side of this umbrella, the 60 to 120% AMI levels. So this is your affordable housing, your workforce housing. And that is where a lot of these workforce attainable housing ordinances come into play. So College Township, they are currently having their ordinance, Ferguson as well, and all of those ordinances, they are addressing the other side of this umbrella. And that is kind of the beauty of having these ordinances for each and every because it's really based on your needs and what you want to address. So you don't necessarily pick what you want to do with this. Now, we spent some time here in the summer when we were getting this presentation together with the planning commission. We just wanted to look around and see what is salaries currently in the State College area. So in June, summer, I spent some time looking around, trying to figure out what a fast food worker makes all the way up to registered nurse in State College area. So what we've done here is we identified some of these available jobs that work on, like LinkedIn, and put them up against essentially what HUD determines as State College's AMI for all of these places. for all of these places. So as you can see here, ordinance starting at 60% AMI, that $45,000 for that one-person household, you can compare it to all of these jobs that this person would not be making enough to qualify for this housing program. All the way to the other side of the spectrum, registered nurse, and where they fall on this AMI spectrum. So they're below, they're below 120. So really, again, this is just context of when we get to drafting an ordinance, what AMI percentage do we want to address in this ordinance? And it is our, it's your choice, and it has to be what your community needs. So, and we can flip back and forth, and you'll see these numbers again throughout this presentation. But you'll see throughout a lot of this, I compare a one-person household because it's easy to wrap your head around, I am a single person, this is what I make, this is my income period, to your typical four-person, nuclear, family household. So the same thing, we've actually added a lot of the same numbers, we added on a few more jobs to get that higher spectrum because, as we discussed earlier, the household is bigger, so their AMI numbers are lower because they are more expensive. So the fast food workers, you can see, $24,000 a year, the social worker is even paying a 60% AMI in a four-person household. And then police officer, plumber, registered nurse, local government department head not hitting the 120 AMI. So again, this is more just context of the reality of state college, the current jobs that were listed at the time that we found this info, and just try and get an idea of where, who are trying to help, and what they need to help us better practice ordinance for town township. So again, back to this, we have the one-person household at the top, we have the four-person household at the bottom. So essentially, Missy and I calculated, I'm really busy, she doesn't love the calculations, I just make them look good on share. But we're going to run through, again, those salaries for a one-person household, we have the teacher, we have the social worker, we have registered nurse, where they're falling. So this essentially is a chart for a one-person household at the top. 60% AMI, they have to make at least $45,450 in their gross income, so before taxes. HUD says that they can afford their monthly payments, so whether that is a mortgage, whether that is rent, utilities, et cetera, they can only afford $1,136. And we make an assumption here for the. Is there a question?
No.
No? No? Okay. Awesome. So then, we look down, we make an assumption here, we'll have a mortgage of 7% for interest, that 60% AMI household, that one-person, they can afford a house that is priced at And we'll get into the actual numbers of what houses are sold for in state college. My after is going to be a big rush for this group. They are now, they're near $170,000. So again, social worker, same deal. They have to at least make $60,000 to get 80%. They can afford monthly payments of $1,500, and they can afford a house of $227,000. And we'll just continue now, so I've included these similar jobs for four-person households. You can see how these numbers get bigger and bigger based on the household size and all these determining factors. But this data is what's going to help us figure out, because I've seen many iterations of these ordinances and identified issues throughout a lot of them. These are the things that we need to be looking at when we decide the AMI for this ordinance. We need to keep into account, especially when it comes to renters, when their monthly payments are getting to be about market rate, the question is, who are we helping with this attainable housing ordinance if their monthly payments are market rate? And so these are the types of things that we're going to have to consider. So chopper, average soul price in this June of 2024 for center county, average soul price for households is $320,000. So you can see where that's really fallen in this spectrum. Any other questions about this?
Elliot has a question.
I think, I think we need to look at this in a whole different way. They had a big article about this in the New York Times a month or two ago, where they talked about people wanting to move back, for example, to Kalamazoo, Michigan, and that what they could afford five or 10 years ago, they can't afford at all now, even though they're still doing pretty well. And so the, the local governments and the state governments have gotten together and arranged what amounts to a grant program, and we've heard that from some candidates this, this fall, that they would provide a grant to a person so that they could afford a house that they can't afford now. Now, this is a political thing because are we willing to do that and for whom? But it may be necessary because there's a tremendous housing shortage in the country that didn't exist before, and it's not just going to be solved by looking at the same things that we're looking at now. And so I think we need to broaden this, what are, what are we, what actually is needed to make a change? And is there a consensus of people that are willing to make these changes? But unless we have solid proposals, there isn't anything for anybody to vote on or to say they like it or not like it. And right now, we're not even considering some of these things. I mean, who around here has talked, has heard that they could get a grant for a down payment on a house? I never heard of it, and I, I never experienced it, but it may be something that's necessary now, or maybe it isn't. But that's the kind of thing we have to think about.
There are. There are lower interest rates for first-time homebuyers. Opportunities for that.
Yeah. But sometimes that doesn't even help when the, when the price is high. Right, even a low interest rate doesn't help when the price is so competitive.
Good about Whitman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were mentioning it. Sorry about that. We might be kind of jumping the gun here, I'm sure Jenna's going to get to this at some point, or when we settle down to really study, but there are a number of resources out there certainly. And I had read that same article that Elliot is referring to, and the writer's Connor Dogerty, so Jenny probably heard of him. But yeah, so I've been doing some reading on that, trying to get my head around it, but the idea of subsidizing housing, it's the first time I've read about it. That is local, I mean, it's local governmental entity, so it could be the local state or federal, anyway. So I'm guessing that'll be one of the options on the table as we go ahead to discuss.
Oh, listen, listener, Betsy, please.
I just want to inform the board, the county has had a first-time homebuyer program for, before I started practice law, so that was, you know, 30-some years. And they've just undergone a process of looking at that program in terms of expanding what they make available in terms of down payment. So the program gives a first-time homebuyer down payment funds or, or closing clause. It's a, it's a no-interest loan that sits as a second mortgage behind their first mortgage. So if they ever sell the property, the county gets their money back, but they don't have to make payments on it. And that's been around for a long time. And they are also have, of course, and probably Jenna's going to get to this, they have a housing task force that has been looking at projects as well. And those, in a sense, Elliot, some of them, that is grant money, if you will, that's coming from the county, it's federal money coming down through the county and being used for that process. But that program's been around for a while, and of course, FHA, PHFA, Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, has had programs for buyers, regardless of whether you're a first-time homebuyer or not, to help them get loans at, at a higher percentage loan to value. So the standard is 80%, but they've gone as high as 100%. And of course, the VA does that as well. So there are, there are programs out there, and most of the realtors and banks know of those programs and the eligibility, but I think what, what Jenna's really talking about is looking at ways to incentivize housing within the township, and maybe also potentially, as a part of that incentive process, develop some funding that you could use for your own grant program. So I do agree with you, with Supervisor Whitman, I'm sure there's more to this presentation. But to be clear, there are some programs out there that exist now. They just aren't things that are always advertised and available to everyone, or they're available to everyone, but people aren't aware that they exist.
Thanks for clarifying that.
And you, the supervisors, can we let Jenna finish, and then we can move forward, don't you? Jenna?
Oh, no, but hold on, sound crew.
Get down.
Yes.
Yes, yes. All right. So that is 30% AMI. There are a lot of programs out there right now, and I am, as I'm guilty of this, I mean, I just bought my house in July.
Oh.
It's a little bit of false, it's a little bit of false advertising, especially when it comes to the income. It's first-time homebuyer program if you make a certain income. And so there, that's where we run into these issues. But I do know about state college is that we have a lot of highly educated individuals that have crippling student debt, that have great jobs, and they just can't figure out what to nest egg. That's exactly right, that silent second on a mortgage, that is a mechanism that local municipalities can use if they have money set aside to do that. And that can be part of this, if that is what you choose as an option to meet this type of ordinance requirement, having a fee and new option for the developers to pay as opposed to building them, that you do have sources of revenue to come up with these programs, specifically catered for township. So then that is, further on, in the next presentation, would I like to call this the buffet? So this is essentially, we're going to go through what you typically see in these types of ordinances. And there's a ton of ways to go about them, and my role here today is to educate you on your options available to you. And answer any questions, comparison, contrast, and all these things. So there's two types of ordinances that we typically see, voluntary and mandatory. I have pros and cons listed for all of them. You know, voluntary is typically, that's where I see most municipalities start. The voluntary ordinance, they already have a lot of participation because developers aren't required to, and it really doesn't help their pro forma to be building affordable units. That's just honest truth about it. Why would they build affordable units when they can be building market rate and make more money? So you get limited participation, you get inconsistent results, they can be misused, and a lot of it is market-driven. And so that's, that's a lot of unknowns. And then we see the other side of this mandatory ordinances. So you're guaranteed units with, depending on what your trigger for that ordinance is, it's equitable and it's fair, and that's for both sides of the coin. The developers know what's expected of them, and so does the municipality. So you have that fairness aspect. You get long-term impact with mandatory ordinances, so depending on how long you want these units to remain attainable, that's going to be another point of discussion in this ordinance. And again, you get transparency with the mandatory ordinances. Everyone knows what's expected of them, if they want, if you want to build here and this many units, et cetera, et cetera. So there aren't really as many unknowns. It's very transparent ordinance and process, and it results in high project costs, and I'm not going to deny that. When a municipality says, this is a policy, there is an identified affordability issue, this is how we're choosing to address it, it drives up project costs for the developers. And that's where we need to strike a balance for the community and for the development community, because you can't go so far one way or the other, or it isn't going to be a success. So that's the one thing I do want to stress. Now, the big thing that we're seeing is kind of this hybrid approach, where they are having mandatory ordinances, but they also are including incentives and other opportunities for the development community to still meet the policies and the goals of the municipality, and giving the development community flexibility to provide those necessary policy goals that have been identified in this ordinance. So applicability, there's pretty much two ways that this ordinance, you'll hear me say, ordinances like this are triggered, and where they are applicable to. So we're going to start with, we've seen ordinances that are applicable everywhere throughout the entire municipality. It is, this ordinance is applicable when, and it's usually a certain density or percentage of units that are being proposed on this site, which ties into zoning. So this is where we're going to get a lot of interesting aspects. This is where planning commission, this is where zoning officer comes into play, because we only permit so much density in certain areas. So while the ordinance may be applicable township-wide, the reality is, it's not going to be triggered unless it is a significant residential development. Additionally, you can have this ordinance applicable to certain areas where you want the attainable housing units. That allows you to tailor the ordinance, given nowhere it's going to be applied, however, you need to also consider that whole equity discussion. And it's, we kind of almost get into those exclusionary practices. So that's where, this will be an exercise in trying to figure out, where do we want this ordinance applicable? Is it everywhere? Are we targeting certain areas? Or if it's with regional growth boundary, where there's public CADA services, we saw today, you know, like there are a lot of issues that come into play when we talk about these ordinances, where do we want these types of units to be built, et cetera. So these are some of the issues at play between all of these options available to So, back to this trigger calculation I keep talking about. So there are two types of ordinances that I've seen of when this ordinance would come into play. There is your basic, once you propose 10 units or X amount, number of units, I don't recommend going less than 10, either 10 or more, 10 is the national average for these types of ordinances. You need to provide X percentage of attainable units. And again, that 10 is a national average, so the example I have in front of you is 10% of the attainable units, or 10% of your total will be attainable. Again, national average, you can do less, and I do not recommend more unless you have a specific study that justifies the need for more. And I've only seen cities in Oregon and Washington, New New York City, that specifically have that data in hand. So I would like to start with national average with these types of deals. You can go below and over. So in this example, I have front view, this developer's proposing 100 units. And with your trigger being 10 units, once you propose 10 or more, 10%, that is applied to your total. So in this development of 100 units, 10 are attainable in this calculation. This is the easiest calculation, I will say that. There is a density calculation, which takes into fact the size of a lot and the amount of units on it. This plain old 10 or more, you have to provide attainable units, is simpler. There are pros and cons to both calculations, and I'll actually show you a couple examples to compare the two, just so you can understand. And it's really going to be about the context of the community, how big are the lots that we anticipate to be developed, et cetera, et cetera. Everyone has their own preferences. I know College Township, they have a density trigger. The Borough and Ferguson, they just do the 10-unit trigger. When a developer proposes 10 units or more, the attainable housing ordinance is applicable. So I call this, this is College Township's example of their density calculation to figure out how many, if attainable housing units are required, and how many. So essentially, what they do is they take, they essentially divide out the size of a lot by the number of units on the lot. And that gets you a percent or a decimal that you'll see on the left side of this slide. And that tells you then what they're multiplying the total units by to get how many attainable units will be included in that development. So again, you see, you're getting to 10 or more, 10%. This is very similar down here to just the 10-unit trigger. However, they do do less, which will give you, will give you units. So it may be that a development that is very tight sizewise, they have a lot of units on that site, and maybe nine units. It might be eight. They wouldn't trigger a 10 or more unit ordinance. However, the density calculation ordinance would be triggered. So for this density calculation, so this is pretty much used by College Township. If you have 100 units on one and a half acres, you get 66.6. And that brings you back to 10%? You still get 10 units? Actually, no, 6%. Sorry. No, that was wrong on this one. So for this calculation, I know 66.6 is 10%. So now we're going to compare these two. So I try to find that sweet spot because at the end of the day, the density calculation is going to be, I would say, easier to get around if you have more suburban rural green developments as opposed to the 10-unit trigger ordinance, which is more of your smaller dense sites. So this is a comparison between the two. We have the density calculation on the left, 25 units on 25 acres. And then we have just the plain old on the right, 10 units or more, or like 10% need to be attainable, and the differences between the two. So in this scenario, in comparison, if you have 25 units on 25 acres, those are one acre lots. That equals one. No attainable units would be a part of this proposal. However, if you were to switch that and say, no, we're going to do the 10-unit trigger, they're proposing 25 units, that's greater than 10, you need to give us, and typically in these ordinances, you would round up to three attainable units. So again, these are just more comparisons between options on applying this ordinance. I have my preference. I like the 10-unit trigger period. It's cleaner, it's easier to calculate, and it's harder, in my opinion, to get around. I've seen a lot of applications that will come in, and they'll just be under that requirement when it's a density calculation, so they, no attainable units need to be provided. So that's where we need to take in consideration the context of Patton Township, where this ordinance is going to be applied. Is it going to be in rural suburban areas? Is it going to be in more urban areas? Or is it going to be everywhere? And we're going to have to try to find that sweet spot. Let's see here. Yeah, so three 10 units. Okay. So those are the trigger, triggers for these types of ordinances. 10 or more, you're building it. Or we have the size of a lot divided by the amount of units being proposed. And then that's going to change the outcome of how many units are, are, how many attainable units will be required. Are there any questions about any of that so far?
Any questions for Jenna at this time? Jenna, see none.
Hello?
Oh, Fedora has a question. Fedora.
Yes, hi, I'm on Zoom.
Go ahead.
Would you like me to introduce myself?
Yes, please.
Okay. My name is Fedora Stev. I live in Hart Forest Village in Patton Township. Of course. Yeah, I just wanted to comment about all of this stuff. I, I do see a need for housing for working people, you know, not just the top 20%. You know, Patton was, Patton grew as a solidly middle-class and working-class township. And, you know, I think we should try to keep it that way. But I suppose my question is, who would build affordable housing exactly? Now, I, I posed this question, right? Because, you know, the developers are only going to build it if they can profit off of it. And, you know, that's assuming the land values are, make it profitable enough to build enough units. So I'm just wondering what, you know, I don't know what the land market looks like, but I'm just wondering how we can make sure housing is going, you know, to the working people that need it, and not just the top 20%.
Jenna?
For the rest of my presentation.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I didn't know it was over. I thought we were going to public topics. I apologize.
No, there, there's a lot of info to get through, and I encourage questions throughout. So that is something, again, as I pointed out in the first couple slides, this is going to be about striking balance. We need to have the balance between these policies and these goals that the township has. Also recognizing, at the end of the day, the development community aren't going to build anything if they can't make a profit. So it's always ending. How do we balance all of that? And that comes into what we'll talk about later with incentives and all of these other tools in order to try to make this requirement a little more palatable, as I will call it, to the development community.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and Jenna, thank you. Well, your presentation.
She's not, she's not done yet.
Sorry. There's more.
She's not done. Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
These are actually a little bit easier. We're through the calculating, we're through, like, the AMI, the hard stuff. So a lot of this is pretty simple. And these are choices that are available to you as the Board of Supervisors. And really, the goal after this very long presentation, I have a little quiz that I'd like you all to take because while either if I get the green light to start working with planning commission on this, or we need more information, I like to know, I haven't been working long enough with the board here at Patton Township. So I really want to get a gauge of where we're standing with all these options that I'm running through right now. So now we're getting into type and tenure, which is rental and homeownership. There are ordinances out there that only address homeownership. There are ordinances out there that only address rentals. And the reality of it is, a lot of them are now addressing both because these needs are being identified. So back to this chart that I have, the one thing when determining, if you do want to consider rentals in this type of ordinance, to keep in mind that middle row of those monthly payments. Because what I saw at Ferguson Township, our ordinance solely only addresses 80% to 120% AMI. And if you look at that middle line, 1,500 and 2,200 for monthly payments, for a mortgage, that may make sense. For rentals, that's above market rate for a one-person household, hypothetically, a one-bed indoor studio. And so what we were trying to fix at Ferguson, we had a development come in, they were proposing rentals, they had to provide workforce rental units. And the developer said to us, I'm going to have an issue finding people who make enough money to live in these workforce units. Like, it's in line with my market rate, if not more. So these, again, are things that we have to consider. So College Township, I believe that their rental portion of their ordinance, it is for anyone making from 0% all the way up to, I think it's 60% AMI. So they flipped it. They said, for rentals, if you have a rental workforce unit, it's going to be from 0 to 60. If we have a home ownership, for sale, home, unit, et cetera, then we're going to go on the other end of that spectrum and address from, I think their ordinance is 65 to 120. And they are currently tweaking that. So these are just the things that we need to consider depending on the type of ordinance. If you want to have this applicable for rentals, if you want to have it applicable for homeownership, et cetera, that is going to tell me where we need to fall on this percentage for the AMI. So incentives. You'll hear me say throughout this whole process, carrots is fixed. And successful ordinances that have been holding up have more carrots than sticks. And that's a very big thing that we need to remember. So what we mean by that is the incentives that we are going to be discussing, what we are comfortable with providing to the development community if they build these units. What, what are those? And personally, I can't see my notes, so I'm going to cheat because I have a lot of incentives in here. I don't want to miss any. They're all very important. So we have density bonus increase. So typically, what you see for every attainable unit built, you get an extra market rate unit on your site. And what that does is it makes that pro forma number a little bit better. Yes, they are going to take a hit by providing an attainable unit versus a market rate, and we're going to give you another market rate in addition to that if you choose to build it. I've seen parking reductions. Many ordinances don't require parking to be provided for the attainable units. Ideally, these units are located where there is public transit. And that is part of this discussion as well. I've seen modifications to the Saldau. If units are being built, maybe there's a park nearby, and parkland fee and lieu is waived, so. But again, this is based on the individual communities and what they are comfortable doing. And I've seen expedited processing. I giggle about that because at the end of the day, there's little that we can control with expedited processing. Land development plans, it will all depend on the type of plan that is submitted and how well it is meeting the ordinance. So to me, I kind of, that's, in my opinion, is a throwaway. There are so many issues that come into that with Penn dot FEMA. I mean, so that's where I'm like, if that doesn't move the needle for the development community. Fee reduction and waivers. So land development applications could be waived from fee moves I discussed earlier. And then subsidies. That's direct financial contribution from the government to support specific projects. So we hear a lot about, like, tapping fees. We don't recommend that because there's this idea if, oh, if we pay for the tapping fees for these affordable units, that will make them more affordable. And the reality of it is, tapping fees, they're the tapping fees. And it really just, it gets dispersed to the whole project. It has no, in my, I've never seen it have significant impact in that. So keep in mind when that is discussed as well. And we can talk about that more, I'm happy to. And then tax evasion. I've seen this in many municipalities. I have not seen it done in state college. But it's typically a lot like Alerta. Essentially, you have your tenure window, and slowly, the tax, taxes are ramped up over those 10 years in order to give the development, or the developer the opportunity to make this development profitable. It helps with that bottom line number. So those are all the incentives that I've really seen out there. I'm sure that there's more. Let's see, can we really talk about others? These are the big ones that I've seen done in Pennsylvania.
Jenna? What is Saldau?
Yeah.
What is Saldau?
Subdivision land development ordinance. So while we can't provide flexibility in the zoning ordinance, that, zoning here in board, that's a different thing. We can provide flexibility for anything that appears in the Saldau. It's a very powerful tool.
Thank you.
So anything in that ordinance potentially could be free game if that is something that the board wanted us to explore. Typically, you see the private improvements. You'll see sidewalks, you'll see the parking, you'll see streets, that type of stuff in these ordinances. So that is another thing that we can look at. I've seen older affordable developments where to make it more affordable for the developer, they only provided sidewalks on one side of the street and not the other. And those are against Saldau requirements. But that, that whole concept is changing because this equity issue is coming into play now. And when we say, oh, you only have to put sidewalks on one side of the street and not the other in this development, it's not, it's not going over its limit anymore. So we're looking at other ways to help the development community. Recognizing, we all have wants and needs, and we need to meet in the middle for a lot of this stuff. So we got to find those things that move the needle and help the development community while helping the municipality is still getting the attainableness that they want. So that's striking that perfect balance.
Elliot has a question.
I think this presentation is excellent as far as it goes. But again, I don't think we're really going to get to solve this problem unless we think differently. For example, if you wanted to start a business, are you going to wait for the funds to come in? in to expand your business, or are you going to find grants? I think there are much better programs for business people to get grants so that they can make these expansion things. Others will call this charity, but unless we change something, none of this is going to happen. So for example, in these cities where they're providing several thousand dollars to somebody who will purchase a home, where's that money going to come from? It can't just grow there. But if you say it's an investment, then maybe it's different. For example, I-99, okay, it happens to be sitting there. But suppose we had to fund that today, where would we get the money for it? And somehow the state did get the money for that, and it's an important improvement. Having better housing and more housing available to more people is also necessary, but how are we going to do that? I think it's a totally different question. I don't have the answer to this, but I remember 10, 20, 30 years ago, we were hearing mostly the kind of thing that if you wanted to build attainable housing, no, we don't want that because we don't want, quote unquote, them living near us. You don't hear that as much anymore. You hear instead that we actually have to, we actually want to have people living here and, and doing well, and they're not going to be as restricted. How far is that going to go?
Any other comment? Jenna's seen no other comment.
Hi. Hi. Is it, is it all part of my comment?
Go ahead.
I apologize. Yeah, I, I do just, I am just like concerned about, you know, how much the, you know, private developers and entrepreneurs can provide the attainable housing that we need exactly. But I, I, I do wish everyone luck in trying to explore all their options. I think we need to look at, you know, we need to expand our horizons, we need to look at a lot more options, but, you know, I, I hope we use all the tools we have at our dispos, at our disposal that are available to us, and we can hopefully come up with something that is fair and just, just nice for the community, you know? Just, just nice for humanity. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Jenna?
All right, last slide. All right. Finally, compliance alternatives. So as we discussed throughout a lot of this, what alternatives are out there for developers if they were to trigger this ordinance? They could build them on-site. We have up here seen fee and lieu as an option. So instead of building on a pay, the cost of a unit or however many units they want to pay a fee and lieu as opposed to building it, they can designate existing units. I've seen that done. And this was something I was looking at at Ferguson. We have a lot of light tech properties that weren't going to be affordable anymore. Light tech, it's low-income housing tax credit housing developments, so they have a 30-year affordability. A lot of them were built 29, 28 years ago, and they are no longer going to be affordable. They aren't required to be affordable. So that idea came up to designate existing units in the municipality as the affordable units. It would have to be comparable. There were certain constraints on that idea, up to code, et cetera. So we're still getting attainable units. I've seen land donation as an alternative to building the attainable units. And then offsite construction. So whether it's patent township, whether we want to save regional growth boundary, however, and really for these compliance alternatives, the most successful ordinances are written for the local and national context. We can't write an ordinance for solely national developers coming in and building in our communities. We can't write an attainable housing ordinance for local developers that are in our communities because they're not the only players here. So, and that's where we're going right into issues. So when we have a lot of options and alternatives out there, each developer is different, they have different strengths, they may have a lot of different properties, they may have land, and giving them more options to still meet these policy goals is, in my opinion, the better way forward. So I hope everyone here has a cell phone or computer to go to mentee.com. And this is essentially my gauge of where everyone is following. Planning commissioners, everyone who wants to know what patent township elected funded officials are thinking about all these options.
Jenna, can you put that back up?
Mentee.com.
What was your code?
These are a little bit too many examples.
Up here.
I need the code down.
And then you put in that code, that is the code to our little check-in quiz.
Can we have that sent to us?
It says the code can't be found.
Dang it. It's my first time using it, so should have practiced. Well, you can still go through some of these questions, and we can do a verbal or thumbs up, thumbs down, those marketing.
Jenna, you can't see me. While, while you're troubleshooting and geek squatting, I just wanted to make just a couple of points. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to Jenna for, for explaining a lot of really difficult material. So I commend you all for making it through the presentation. We knew it was going to be a lot. But I just wanted to make two points. Patent Township from the ARPA funds that were, that were received, $25,000 was set aside for the initial development of a first-time homebuyer program for patent township residents. And we haven't done a rollout of that because we have to get the policies in place first, and that's a patent township board decision. Whenever you make the decisions about what kind of policy do you want to set, who do you want to serve, so this conversation that's happening now will roll into that. Now, it's only 25,000, but it's a start. So we, we did plant that flag, and that was due to the good works that Anita Tease and Nicole Pollak had done with the task force. And then secondly, I think it's important, as we're at this creation point, you know, you're in a really, you're in a really exciting and challenging position to be developing an ordinance. As Jenna said, it's not an amendment. You don't already have something, so this is really starting from scrap, from scratch. But I caution you to not think that it has to be just an ordinance to solve the problem. Elliot makes a lot of really good points. So try not to think that an ordinance is going to be the avenue to solve all of our housing issues because it's not going to solve everything, but it can be a way to get some people in our community, either in more affordable housing or individuals who work here who aren't able to live here. So just keep that in mind, that it doesn't have to be just an ordinance, and you can't look at anything else, but an ordinance is an effective tool when it is well structured with input from the development community and the community and the professional planners. So that's all. Thanks.
Madam Chair. I just sent your manager and Jenna and Missy, I included you on it, a link to the National League of Cities Housing Accelerator. I don't know, Jenna, if you've seen that, but I, I would encourage both the Planning Commission members and the board to take a look at that. I think one of the things that that accelerator did involved both the League of Cities, it involved planners, it involved the national home builders, it involved a series of really good stakeholders in the process. And Jenna pointed out that there are some things you can do outside of just having a workforce housing ordinance. There's some things you can look at in subdivision land development, so I'd encourage you to look at that. I would also say, and I don't say this as a negative, but I think you have to be aware that across the country, there are programs all over, there's a wonderful program in Minneapolis, for example. And those programs, though, there are still NIMBYs. And in fact, the NIMBYs are much more pronounced than they were when we visited this issue in Gray's Woods six years ago, eight years ago. And I'm not picking on the people out there, I'm just saying to you that people love this conceptually until it's the house next to them. And honestly, when we had those stakeholder meetings, there were stakeholders that were not comfortable having the kind of flexibility that you have in Minneapolis. So for example, you can tear down an existing structure and put up a six-building apartment complex. Now, Minnesota has, that's gone all the way up to their state Supreme Court, it's been found to be valid, and that's going forward. But you just don't be surprised that you have people, once you've established a program, who still come in and say, but I don't really want that next to my house, I want it, you know, five blocks away or in another part of the county. So I'm just cautioning you.
Okay. Supervisor Whitman.
We actually had it more recently when we examined the ADUs. Is that what you were referring to?
Well, that's certainly one, you know, California, all over California, that's one of the things that they're doing right now to just get more housing is accessory dwelling, ADUs, accessory dwelling units. So granting in-law suites and other sorts of things. The turn is that in a lot of communities, people don't like that because they think you're just going to rent it out for football weekends. You know, so I understand there got to be some parameters around it, but that's a real easy, fast get to add housing units into your, into your matrix, whether they are attainable or not, simply adding them in. I mean, I understand the purpose here is attainability, but across the country, we have places where there just isn't any housing, period. Whether you can afford it or not is a secondary question.
I have a question or comment.
Please go to the microphone, Sharon. Thank you.
Sharon, and please say your name and so they'll know exactly.
I'm Sharon Collins, and I'm on Planning Committee, or Planning Commission. A lot of this stuff just comes down to the fact that supply is not keeping up with demand. And I guess we have to keep that into our considerations, too. If we go through and, you know, set some boundaries and some rules, will that keep developers from moving in and, and, and providing that supply? So I just, I mean, I, I think we have to keep a real open mind when we're, when we're looking at this long-term.
Yeah, and I think what you've seen in state college, and Jenna can correct me if I'm wrong, but the national developers are doing this elsewhere. They come in, they say, give me, Ed Leclerc, for the State College Planning Director, has said, they come in, they say, give me your ordinance, let me do the math, let me see if it works. It's where we fall down around here, and I mean, no disrespect to the local developers, but the local development community has not been as willing to embrace this as the national developers have been. So I don't know that you're going to have an issue with people not wanting to come in and develop because we have workforce housing or attainable housing regulations. The other side of that, too, is that the short-term rental market is largely out of control. It's, it's kind of like the Wild West around here, and not just here, everywhere in the state. So we have to maybe think about, as we're looking at this, is there something we want to do with short-term rentals? Ferguson Township requires that you have to live in a house six months out of every year so that then you can have a short-term rental and you register with them. That might be a rudimentary way to go for us because we're finding people that are coming into Park Forest, buying up homes, they're LLCs, they don't live here, they come in all cash, they stay seven football weekends a year, or they stay two, two football weekends a year, and they Airbnb it the rest of the year. So, and the state probably needs to address short-term rentals in some way because it's affecting hotels and bed and breakfast that are paying the hotel tax, and there's other issues that are not township issues. But I, I think that's something we might want to consider thinking about as we work on workforce housing, is do we kind of have to go hand in hand? Because you're right, the supply is an issue, and the supply is an issue for a variety of reasons, and, and one of them being short-term rentals are killing some of the supply that's out there to buy a home now.
Sharon makes a good point, though, and that's why I think the Housing Accelerator is helpful, because there are a lot of issues affecting affordability of housing. We focus on whether it's, whether it's the price or, or other issues, but one of the big issues is there's not available land to develop, right? It's not inside the growth boundary, or it's held by a certain party or individual. And this isn't, I'm not now saying this as a state college center region problem, this is nationwide. There are other issues, which I think the Housing Accelerator does a great job of telling you about so that you can speak outside of this issue, like, for example, getting transformers. Who would have thought that getting transformers would literally stop development? But they have all over the country. And the other issue is because we are now mandating higher electricity loads in homes, we now, the Excel, the, I just lost my thought. The electrical requirements for that, that we needed in 2021 has now changed, and now in 2024, it's a bigger unit, and you can't get them because we're not making them. I mean, you can get them, but you got to wait a year to get them. So the whole point of that Housing Accelerator discussion is helping people understand that it isn't, yes, the planning makes a big difference, no question, but it isn't ju, you can do all of that, to your point, Sharon, and you're still going to have issues because we've got other problems that, that we need to be, maybe we can't fix, but we can advocate about, right? We can speak about in how we do things. So I think it's a really valuable tool to look at.
I think a lot of these things are so much easier to deal with through the rental market than they are going to be through the, you know, purchasing homes side of, of the equation. And when developers do come in, and if we have like that 10% kind of solution as part of our, our setup, I mean, you have to make sure that the, the quality of that construction for that 10% is going to be similar or the same as the, the rest of the development, the other structures that are going up in those developments, too, because otherwise you're, you're, you know, kind of undercutting the whole reason. I mean, if people are, if you're going to try to make something affordable for people to get into, or more attainable for people to get into, then it has to be the same quality as the rest of the development. So those are just a couple of my thoughts.
Thank you. Supervisor Whitman.
Yeah, so, you know, when, we are, I mean, all of this housing shortage started at COVID, and we've never.
It was already happened across the country. Texas, Texas is literally out of approved land for housing.
Right, sorry, it actually started in 2008 when we had our economy downturn. Sorry, that's what I meant to say, and we've, we've just never recuperated. So, so construction units are, they're just not building smaller houses, it's not, you know, financially viable for them. But regarding, yes, I'm just, I'm just reading off some stats here, you know, we're one to two to three million units short across the country. Like, and the building industry is not going to start up tomorrow and change things. So I, I agree, we need to work on what's here. I ran into a website, I believe it's in Virginia, or I do know that Virginia has a, a program that deals with NIMBY, so it's a protracted program, I'll get that and share it with.
So does California, there's a, there's a.
But this is.
In my backyard, in my backyard, NIMBY or something. They've taken the words California has.
Yeah, and, but it was, it's, I'm curious with California, it's ready, set to go, it's a, you know, probably half a day or day-long training or seminar. And I, I also read something, which I don't, didn't catalog, but it had to do with the whole process of bringing the entire community in to talk about, their community, as opposed to saying, we want to have the ADUs in our R2 district, which is what we did with the planning a couple of years ago. We thought we were being proactive by announcing this, and people heard it without any discussion and came right in and were against it, and they, they just based on what the Planning Commission had put forward. So it hadn't even made it to the Board of Supervisors. So I think, but in the studies where, or a couple of examples where the entire community come together and, very similar to what we did with the State High Project in 2014. So we all know that it failed in 20.
2001.
2001 was the first one.
2001, 2002, something like that.
Whatever, it, it failed, and then it was just toxic. And then in 2014, when the school board decided, hey, we really do need a high school, they made it happen. So they, they had, they do that, they had the town halls at the school, and then they took the show on the road, and then we did it door to door, and so, and so forth. So we, we got community. So we, we got, the community actually got to pick one of seven models, and not everybody was happy with that one or seven, but, um, you know, and I, I had to work on the project, we were hoping it would get 50 or, you know, 51% approval, and it got almost 75% approval by the town. So I, I love that idea of trying to bring the entire community in and have them at the designing, deciding and designing deal.
So I think we should go back and do Jenna's quiz, because that's gonna help us. And there's a code up there now that works. Yeah, different. So menti.com, and then the code you put in is 7260. 3729. M E N T I. 3729. Different code, so if you have your phone out, you can vote now, it's live voting.
And if you don't, can we use what's already on the tablet?
No, you can't, I don't think you can vote that way, you have to have a. 7260 3729. This is like Live Academy Arts.
Can you like, help me, I'm trying to like, picture what this would actually look like. So if a, um, so if there was a complex that had a hundred units, again, for a hundred, selling for $400, right? And let's go the, you have a hundred units, so 10%, so you got 10 units. What, what would the price be for those 10 units if we were focused on like the 80% AMI?
So let's let Jenna answer that question.
If you type it, if you type it here.
So a unit for sale at 80% AMI for a one-person household, that house could be sold at $227,000.
So Tom's asking a question. No, no, just wait, just wait.
So, so if the other, we're talking about a unit being sold for 329 667 at 80%, it would, AMI would be 227 800?
Uh, one-person household, 8% AMI, that unit could be sold at $227,000. So whether it's a house, whether it's a town hall, whether that is a condo or apartment, HUD says a one-person household at 8% AMI can afford a house, eight units, at $227,000.
So what would the other, actually, I don't even know if I'm asking the right question, so I'll, I'll be quiet for right now.
All right, have you answered the question, so we can move, Jenna, to the next slide.
All right, so we have two more votes in. For the first question. Okay, now, um, so essentially, this is back to the idea of, is the ordinance going to be voluntary, mandatory, or a hybrid, which kind of combines mandatory with the incentives provided to developers for building the units? So, um, voluntary, typically voluntary ordinances, they are based, they're incentive-based. If you build this, that'd be really awesome, and we're gonna give you X, Y, and Z to do it. You don't have to, but if you want to, you're gonna get X. Mandatory is you're getting it, you have to build them, some of them have incentives, some of them don't. I would never recommend, um, having a mandatory ordinance that does not have any incentives for a developer. That, again, that carrot and stick that you will hear me discuss, I would not recommend that. So a lot of municipalities are on this hybrid approach where it is required, and in order to make your pro forma a little bit better, we're gonna give you X, Y, and Z to do it because you're doing it. You have to do it, and we're gonna give you stuff to make it a little bit better for you. All right, so where are we applying this ordinance? So most apply to the entire municipality. Granted, this is based on whether that's a density, whether that's 10 units or more, et cetera. So knowing our zoning, we know that these types of units are only gonna be built in so many areas, so typically, we all are familiar with the regional growth boundary. We don't permit that type of density outside the regional growth boundary. So that's a very good determining factor, is municipality zoning. However, still, having it applied everywhere, having that density or unit trigger as that thing, as that deciding factor, to me, is the best coverage for municipalities. Again, and targeted geographic areas, um, it's a smaller area, and we can specifically cater the ordinances to those areas. Keeping in mind, we have to be very cognizant of exclusionary practices, um, and that equity issue, and that's where most municipalities go to having it applicable throughout the entire municipality, and it's when the ordinance is triggered, is based on the density, which it's only gonna be applied in certain areas anyways. And then to the trigger. So are we doing a density? So College Township is the only municipality that does density, it's the division of the size of the lot by the number of units being proposed, or as we see in Ferguson and the borough, it's just, if you are proposing 10 units or more, this ordinance is gonna be applicable to you. Knowing that only in certain zoning districts and only certain areas of patent township is where that density is permitted. And then percentage units, it must be attainable. So national standard is 10%, you can do less, I, you, I would not ever recommend more. So I definitely would stick to national standard or less for this one. All right, so type in tenure, so are we, is this ordinance for patent township, we've already identified that there is a rental need, there is a homeownership need, or is this ordinance addressing both? And that's gonna tell me, Missy, Summer, where the AMI ranges are landing for these types of units, because the rental AMI is going to be different than your homeownership AMI, because when that rents gets to the point at its market rate, we're not really helping that one. And then, this is based on your previous answer, um, if we are having an ordinance that is applicable for rentals and ownerships, we're gonna have to have different AMIs, or we're not really going to be providing attainable units. So since the last answer was predominantly, we're gonna do both, we will need to have different AMIs, and we can go look at those numbers a little bit closer down the road. All right, so design standards, I didn't really touch on this in the presentation, but, um, when you build your attainable ordinances, when they are required to be built, municipalities require that, um, they're either the exact same as the market rate. Some ordinances provide flexibility on the interior, um, side of that, so, um, these attainable units don't need to have granite countertops, um, but all of those upgraded fixtures are all within the interior. The overall goal of these ordinances is that when you are in a community, you build development, you can't point out the attainable units, you shouldn't be able to determine that. So where the flexibility comes is on the interior side of that, and it's also provided in the size of the unit. So I know the Borough State College, um, we permitted up to, I think, a 10% difference in the size of the units. At the end of the day, um, a lot of these developments, especially in the borough, once you get your shell figured out, it's the same going up all floors. They're having to go other way to build different sized units, it's just not profitable to them. And then, so, so we talked about a lot, so we've got this density bonus increase, so for every attainable unit built, you get a market rate unit in addition to that. And this is, I'd only recommend this for building units, I don't believe you should be giving mark, additional market rate units if you aren't building attainable units. Parking reduction for those attainable units, I think this all depends on the context of the development, uh, if you have single-family homes or townhomes, they're gonna have driveways. So parking reduction is really gonna move the needle on that. However, if you have a mixed-use development where you have structured parking, that might help in those final numbers with the development community. We've seen salvo modifications of subdivision land development ordinance, that is open for discussion on modifications that each municipality is comfortable with giving if attainable units are rebuilt. Expedited processing, we try our best, I will say, patent township is one of the fastest of, where I've seen reviews being done, I mean, they churn them out really quick here, that's something to be very proud of. And we've always tried our best, but there are so many outlying issues, it's kind of, in my opinion, a nicety. We have fee reduction waivers, so if it's an attainable, um, development, maybe there aren't any, um, land development fine applications, maybe the subdivision application is waived, um, other options out there. Subsidy is money being provided by the local municipality to the developer to build these units to help them out. And then tax abatement, usually I've seen it 10 years, um, slowly taxes are lifted up, and it's just to get the, um, developer.
Yes. Why just one? Because we're, are we just gonna include one in the whole?
Because they want us to see what's most important.
Does it only let you vote for one?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Dang it! Are any, I'm seeing zeros on subsidy, tax abatement, and parking. Is that consistent, or do we wanna vote for them when we can't?
Um, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I would, I would've liked to voted for a parking reduction as well, ideally, but I voted for density.
And then compliance alternatives, so again, every developer has their strengths, whether they're national, whether they're a local developer. So what options are we going to be, um, providing in lieu of building these units in the development? So we've seen fee-in lieu, and there is a calculation, um, that, um, Missy and I worked on, um, to get the, um, fee in lieu of building those units, depending on whether it's a single-family slash townhome type of development to a multifamily type of a development, because those construction costs are different, and those fees would be different by the type of the development. Designating existing units that are already in the township, um, whether that is, um, I would recommend market rate units, however, if we run into that example I provided of those low-income tax credit properties that are gonna be coming off the rolls and will be going to market rate, we can maintain their affordability by designating them for another round of affordability. There's land donations, so some developers, they have a bunch of land. Having land in State College is not a bad thing, I think we all know the price of land out there, and that gives patent the flexibility to, uh, work with the land trust, work with Habitat, and take on that role in providing the attainable units in whatever way patent township sees fit. And then there's off-site, so, um, the developer doesn't want to build the units in the development that's triggering the ordinance, but they have another site down the street here where they're gonna build these attainable units, so. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot.
So the question then before the board is, and we've provided input now for Jenna and Summer to start, and Missy to start looking at this, if you're amenable to continuing this discussion further, it would be to refer it to the Planning Commission so they can start working on some draft regulations?
It's the board's pleasure. I said to move it. Any objections? See you now.
Okay.
Jenna, thank you again, and thank the planning board for coming out and helping out.
So we're gonna kick the can down the road.
We're in the home stretch, I promise. We're in a home stretch.
Next on the agenda is the proposed revision for the Joint Pollution Reduction Plan.
Based on a restrictive.
So, uh, Michelle's on Zoom, I think, still. Oh, they're talking. Michelle's on Zoom still, um, I think, but she introduced this to you back in August. Um, our MS4 partners for the Stormwater Project, uh, had to make some amendments to the Joint Pollution Reduction Plan. Um, it doesn't propose changes to the base model utilized for calculating loads or the required pollutant reduction. The change in patent township included the removal of a proposed retrofit to an existing stormwater detention basin, um, because the project that we're working on now will actually give us enough credits, and it also allows for credit sharing in the future should we need it. So this went out and had a public hearing on September 10th, and no one was there, was in College Township, and we did not receive any public comment on it. So it's now ready for action by all of the MS4 partners, so we're looking for the board to just approve it.
Right, can I get a motion to approve the revision of the Joint Pollution Reduction Plan?
Still moved.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes, thank you. Next on the agenda is administration, um, solar power purchase agreement, electricity commitment township.
Okay, so I'll take this. As you may remember, um, I came to you before with setting a participation rate of our electricity in the solar power purchase, uh, agreement. So, um, what they, what we had chosen was 100%. So what the, uh, the working group has decided is there's three tiers that we get to choose between 50%, 80%, and 98%. So we have two, um, two decisions that have to be made tonight, and one is. And one is to confirm our participation in the solar power purchase agreement and number two, to select one of those tiers, whether it's fifty, eighty, or ninety-eight. I am going to again say that I would suggest or recommend that the board chooses eighty percent due to the fact that it's a fifteen-year contract. If we choose ninety-eight or eighty or fifty, we have to purchase that electricity whether we use it or not. Okay? And we have some plans in the future such as maybe putting solar panels on this roof or on public works roof or whatever that might reduce the amount of electricity that we would be purchasing from this, from this agreement and this array. So I would suggest, and I think Amy is in agreement with me, but I'll let her speak if I speak out of turn, that our, that we pledge our commitment to the solar power purchase agreement and that we pledge our commitment at eighty percent. But I will leave that up to the board.
Yeah, and I would just add to what Larry just said. I went to, Pam Adams gave a presentation at our conference on Tuesday and I went to that presentation and I was talking to some of the other center region managers that were there and the discussion point was, if this was five years, I'd say a hundred percent makes it a hundred percent sense. That's the way you should go. But it's so long of a timeframe and we have so many facility plans that we want to look at and so many things that we want to do on our own for sustainability that tying us into ninety-eight percent doesn't make a lot of financial sense. So going with eighty and then implementing your other plans makes the most sense to Larry and I.
Okay, any board member, supervisor, favor?
Just to, to talk about this, why not seventy-seven percent or sixty-eight?
Because the, why not seventy-seven percent? I, I don't know, okay? Other than the working group has decided, and I think it was suggested by the retail electric provider that's going to be handling these, is that they would like all of us to be in one of three buckets.
And be the same.
Fifty, eighty, or ninety-eight.
Okay, that's the answer.
That's the answer.
Very complex.
Because if everybody has a different, then they have to, it becomes a, they have to separate all the electricity by those different percentages and, and it's just much easier mechanically and mathematically if they just have a set percent.
Fifty might be better.
Supervisor Whitman, did you have?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that Patent Township join the power purchase agreement at a rate of eighty percent.
Second.
Discussion?
Do we need a motion or just recommendation?
No.
Well, a motion would be good, yes.
There's a motion. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I said I propose that we become members of the PPA at eighty percent. Of our.
Yeah, I didn't, I just didn't hear them.
Oh, sorry.
Motion on the table, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Next on the agenda. Consent. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the board would like to discuss or remove at this time? If seeing none, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on, next on the agenda is the manager's report.
I will just highlight one thing and then I can answer any questions you have and that is that we're moving our October ninth meeting to October sixteenth and that will be your regular meeting for the month. And then October twenty-third, we will handle the CIP and any other additional things that we might need to talk about. But this facilitates getting our comments back to the cog budget in time.
Is everybody happy for sixteen? All right, next on the agenda is the manager's report.
That's what we just did.
Sorry. Next on the agenda is commit, committee reports. Are there any board member that would like to add to their committee report? The only thing I would like to add for public safety is that the general forum fire director, Sean Kaufman, honored the rescue crew, Rescue Five, Service Fifty-Five, and Unity Five Four. These individuals are firefighters, saved a life. There was a, I think it was a grain bin rescue. And these individuals went in, I know two went into that bin to pull individuals out who had got caught in there. Then one of the firefighters actually extracted grain to save the individual's life. So we would just like to thank these firefighters and EMT individuals for saving, saving lives and we appreciate all that they do. And anyone else on their report?
Yeah, I just want to add to anybody listening out there that house, hold, householders need to notify the center region refuse and recycling department what size trash bin they want and that date, I'm sorry, I don't have the date.
September thirtieth, Monday.
Thank you, I was going to say October thirtieth. If you don't notify them by September thirtieth, you will automatically get the largest cart. So that's ninety-six gallons, I believe.
It's a very large cart.
It's a very large.
It is very large.
But I especially actually want to thank Patent Township for pushing that out. So I've seen it a couple of times on Nextdoor Park for it. So I think that takes some of the burden off of Shelley Mato. So on behalf of her, thank you. Oh, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Next on the agenda is other business, seeing no other business. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second. All right, all in favor say aye. I want to thank everyone and this meeting is now adjourned.